Effect reimbursement for cleaning up. Because we go to cleaning up a lot of those on our own right now, so likely we might not get reimbursed. The documentation reasons of where the materials come from, not having tickets and percentage pools on the trucks and things of that nature until we get, unless we get declared a disaster or a contractor to do it clean up. And then, now if we don't get declared, obviously we clean up on us. We'll have to begin our way, clean up, remove what we can from our way. And it will be a probably a lengthy process if we don't declare, get declared for emergency. But we paused mowing last week just because of still opening roads, not having, you know, too much debris on the roadway still at that point in time when we're trying to assess where we were at before. So we paused the mowing once we reached over today or we're back to mowing the roadway at the moment. Really that's kind of all I've got for new business.
What are you all doing around the bridge? Back mowing the bridge, just cutting around or do you have any?
No, we're just cutting around here for the moment, hoping that again, you know, a mixture of going out. And then, it's not terrible. There'll be a few spots that might be a little length to deal with, might have to go back and hit again. But for the most part, it's spread pretty far apart. You know, we may have a tree, you know, a tree in the layer, a mile and a half, two miles on the paved roads. Sometimes, I mean, we may have two or three back to back within a mile, but for the most part, we can get a mile and a half, almost two miles into two trees sometimes. So it's not terrible. I don't think it would look too awful bad. But we can go back and touch up the areas that have too many trees that don't look good when we get through.
So the disaster declaration, who else can do that? Can't the EMA apply it today?
Yeah, sort of thing, from the federal ground. I'll tell you.
You got it.
Okay.
Thanks. These all, I got a few questions for that. Let me get this current basis. Hold on right there.
Okay. Whatever.
All right. Under current business, I don't have any personnel things to speak about this week, actually. But I do have some information here in your agenda. I've got a full blown information, a breakdown here in the memo of what the costs are. I'm glad I should. I was here to run along the mowing cost comparison memo. In the, in this memo, I have delineated out what the estimated contract cost will be based off the most recent bid attempt where we opened at the end of May. Based off of the dollar figure in that bid was going to turn down for one more mile miles, four hundred and twenty-five miles. Just a fifteen foot wide safety mowing is a hundred and fifty-three thousand. And then for a full width, he actually didn't give me a full width price, but I had calculated from the old bids we got, the percentage difference between the safety mowing and a full width mowing, and calculated that to the per mile price. So an estimated full width mowing at only twenty-five miles is like a hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. If, if the prices came in somewhere. And I don't, I honestly don't see them coming in less or less if we redid it. We had one bidder that the bid misses his price and then had another bidder that contacted us but couldn't get his bond information together in time. But he happened to say that his price is actually about a hundred thousand dollars more than the bid price we had on it for the fifteen foot wide safety mowing.
Derek, how wide is the full width? How wide?
Our roadways are typically forty foot from center line and we estimate lanes are between ten and eleven feet. You know, so you're looking at twenty-nine to thirty feet.
Okay, so this is basically fifteen feet is like a half. Pretty much though.
Just one, we do one pass for the bat wing on each side of the road for safety.
Well, that fifteen feet each side would be all, that would be like two-thirds of the road on each side, right?
Yeah, well, probably close to a half, maybe two-thirds.
You say, you're saying eight foot total roadway?
Yes, forty foot from center line, sorry.
On the far side of the roadway?
Yeah, my apologies. Forty foot from center line is, is safety foot total is in general, that's the majority of our roadways. We have a few that are only sixty, and then we also have a few that are a hundred feet tall. But probably ninety feet plus or eighty foot tall probably. So fifteen foot on each side is approximately half, but in big proportions on the edge of roadways, it's probably a little more than half in a lot of situations.
Anything else?
Just below that, I broke down what we determined the cost to be for upgrading the equipment personnel to be able to mow roadways again and something equivalent to what we used to do. And in that, I've got information on two hundred horsepower tractors approximately, right now the bid price is approximately sixty-four thousand dollars base. Then that John Deere representative here locally, and I think that's who's got a bid on this particular tractor, state bid. It was telling me that they estimate the price could go up probably to about seventy-three to seventy-five thousand for that tractor in Rockdale, November area. So roughly a ten thousand dollar increase, they're estimating.
Ten thousand per tractor?
Yes. And then I've got information on some single lane, ten foot wide bush hogs. Our bat wing bush hogs are in fair shape. We have three and they're in fair shape. They do need maintenance, but fairly often, but they're, they're in fair shape to be what they are. But maybe not quite enough, you know, if we do full width mowing again, ideally we'd love to be able to run two tractors on each side to get that down to, you know, a six, six week or so turnaround for mowing the entire canyon. Without that, if we don't run bush hogs, you know, on one side of the road, probably looking at closer to eight to anywhere from eight to ten weeks for a complete, complete round of the canyon, estimate on that. But I got some other prices in here for some smaller standard width bush hog and two temporary part-time employees as well.
Most of, most of that's manpower to do this, because I know you can't do this with two temporary employees.
That's correct. Really probably the minimum is going to be five, five employees to run a full group, four tractors and one pile truck moving signs.
But with the way it's been raining lately, by the time you did that, eight to ten weeks, when it be time to do it again?
It, well, we usually do the full width in September, when we get in September doing the full width towards the end of that month. And usually it would run into winter, so we should be, maybe not necessarily time to do it again, but we would run on into the winter weather, rain, you know, we would probably on into November, almost Thanksgiving. And then if you had a bad fall with a lot of rain, you could run on into December during the finishing of your mowing cycle. But eight to ten weeks is, is good weather, only a rain chance, you know, once every now, you still can mow. So maybe not have to run a second mowing cycle by the time that one's through, but it could become undesirable at that late end of the year trying to continue to mow. I feel like my, could even come a little bit, I guess, did it for traveling public. But that's, that's all I've got on the mowing right now. All right.
Hope that you like it from the hell to breathe up the next week.
Okay.
And after you decide to get a mow, that whole, the whole week.
Okay. And we have, we mowed it about two weeks ago, so I don't know what kind of, it may be in fair shape. I can drive and look at it and, yeah, if it needs, we just touch up. If, if you notice, if you're through there and, but I'll go check it out as well. We'll definitely do some more there if I see.
Cut it all fifty-five away and the day looking in. Oh, like we're calling the mark and the page, because it's the number of washing crops to go. I think yesterday it was possible to get, so it's a little bit possible.
Okay. Sure. Put this on the list. I'd like to touch base on this again if the next meeting is possible, I'd like to forward some basic information with Mackenzie. If we could more important to personally, yes, sir, I'd like to.
Any more questions on the mowing? Well, come in.
We just get, when y'all talk, we give us the total cost of the program, because the three mowings time are a big part. I know we said we got two, that what we're looking at, total cost of the program versus total cost of the project.
Next thing on the list, I thought, back when we did that, before touching on this last meeting, but I've got some information, additional information on the Arco Stormwater Grant Program. The state has, correct, if you could hear. You don't know that the state has set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Arco money for stormwater applications and stormwater grant to be managed by A D M. It is a sixty-five, thirty-five split, but now the way that split works, I got confirmation on this, is that the county, we would buy the materials for the individual sites as we go to do the work. If approved, of course they have to be, the grant has to be approved first if we, if we apply. And we apply for this and then we would just buy the materials for an individual project, complete that project, and the thirty-five percent match will be our labor equipment to do the work.
Our in-kind?
Yes, in-kind material, force account type labor to do that work. And then A D M or the Arco Stormwater Grant will cover sixty-five percent of the project, mostly material costs. It's more than, I don't think they'll cover any labor equipment. It's almost labor, material costs for them. But as long as our labor equipment is thirty-five percent of the total project cost or, they will cover that sixty-five percent on materials. And as of right now, we have about eleven sites. With, on our eleven sites, I've got estimated about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of material, labor and equipment. And that puts our match actually is a little over thirty-five percent, probably close to around forty percent on those projects or a little bit better. So, and typically it does, it ranges between thirty-five and forty-five percent from what your material cost is, is typically what your labor equipment is to do those projects. So we've estimated that on the eleven projects, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of material cost. Now, the labor equipment is, is not an additional expense, but it'll be used as our match, at least a little bit over thirty-five percent. So the only out of pocket is just the buy of the materials initially, initially from site to site, and after each site, we can turn in for reimbursement on individual sites of the complete, which is that way they're not out very much money as we move on from project to project. You know, typically around the ten to twelve thousand dollars material money for a project. I think we have one that's got about sixty thousand dollars in materials. And we might have to do extra reimbursements, I'll replace on that one, but I have to get the materials going. But other than that, all the other projects are dealing twelve thousand dollars in material. I think I'm gonna pay for that in the grant. So I would like to, I brought forth a resolution for that project to see if we can apply for that. Then that resolution, I would agree that, you know, we would provide a match of equivalent to at least eighty thousand and eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars, twenty-three cent in cash, labor and equipment, or equipment, excuse me, labor equipment or cash match. From all figures, every bit of that will be covered from labor equipment to do the project. This has to be, in order to apply, has been submitted by name of this week. Thank you. That's all, that's all I've got on this one word.
Questions, comments, or anything there?
I just got a couple claim from Val Long's, Kobe Kleen.
Yes, sir.
This couple made up the meeting. And I can look at.
Yes. I actually, I've got the same one.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir, I do. I've looked at it and we actually have something kind of handmade that's somewhat similar that we're using certain instances, but it's not, not exactly like that. That one's a little bit more efficient, but probably than what we use. We've got some version.
Anything else?
You got a deal on the current basis?
I've got, one more current.
Okay.
I've got, the, also I brought, last week brought to everyone, we brought to the commission, the Federal Bridge Investment Program. And I wanted to, I've got some additional information on this, some questions that was asked, and I got the information ready now to discuss it. We discussed last week, the minimum grant award is two point five million. So for an individual grant application, the minimum is two point five million. But in most grants, other than the, the application, there are ninety-ten split on the grant, which if you got a bridge grant, so we would have to cover ten percent of that project. And we'd have to have a minimum size project of two point five million. And to do that, we probably would have to have two, three bridges in, in that package in order to reach that threshold. Either that or one really large bridge. And we have some that are in pretty bad shape, but maybe not to that, to that amount just yet. And in that, what we're proposing to do is to join with thirty-two other counties to go in for a really large grant application. And in this, if we join with this group of other counties, it costs us about twelve hundred and twelve dollars to join in and pay a consultant to do a planning grant for us, to apply for a planning grant first. And then that planning grant is a ninety percent, ninety-ten split as well, but to put together a large application. So that way, if we only have one bridge that we needed, you know, one or two bridges that we could afford to do, that was less than two point five million, we could still be in the group because the whole project through thirty-three counties is going to be far greater than the two point five million on the end of this. The, so ninety-ten split cost on the planning grant if we wanted to pay the, pay a consultant to do the planning for us on that. So to save the planning grant, so it's thirty-three counties total if we join, save the planning grant was three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, it would cost us a thousand dollars, you know, to have our part in, in the planning grant, because it's thirty-three other counties. And that could be very much, if the thirty-three counties, you could see a grant application cost probably up to, I don't know if we had enough digital capacity, but it absolutely is far worse than that. But we could still run a couple thousand dollars worth of in-kind cost to the planning grant. We've been, I've got some timelines too. The planning grant has to be submitted by July the thirtieth, the planning grant application. And then if it gets submitted by July the thirtieth, the early twenty-twenty-four award, excuse me, early twenty-twenty-four is when they would find out if the grant was awarded. They'd have to follow twenty-twenty-four to submit a bridge grant application. And then find out for, if you're awarded a bridge grant, it'll be year-round, spring of twenty-twenty-five, to find out if that. So I'd like to propose to join that, that group in this planning grant application.
Mr. Hough?
How, so you might come in, worst case, we get our plans done for our bridges. I would take on two just by degradation. Are you gonna leave them to kind of your problem bridges? What's your?
We will, we'll present them with a selection, you know, of two or three bridges that are in our worst shape. Well, I've got several that are getting, getting on their age and getting there into some very severe degradation, but over the next ten years, we're going, end up being forced to replace at some point, but.
I would feel like the next meeting in July, you could give us, and I know, talking over the next ten years, you could give us something and by the time it did replace, and you could be talking twenty-five percent more than that depending on where things are, but we need, you know, to start at least some mid-range plans on, you know, the, you look at the bridge on Shelton Road, the Goshen over the Connecticut River, Demore over the Connecticut River, the P River in Chats District there going to Boot Hill. I mean, what, what, like, those are all similarly sized bridges. Roughly right now, what would a bridge, what do you rough, shoot across the valley with a bridge like that be?
Bridges in that size, probably about one four five or so, a bridge about that size.
Do you think there's anything, you know, the way we've done our road maintenance, we broke down, or we were, after we were at Alabama, we were doing twenty percent maintenance and eighty percent resurfacing. Do you think there's some things we need to be looking at in the future we could do maintenance-wise differently in these bridges to prolong the having to be by the, to be?
We do, we have some, some maintenance solutions that we're, we're going, I'd like to begin to implement it. They're not actually terribly possible, but deck maintenance is, is becoming a forefront issue for us on these older bridges. There are some sealers and different things that we can put down on the decks to begin to reseal those, to keep them from becoming severely degraded to the point that we've been some, some major work on. And we've got some plans forth on that. We've got one we'll try first this year, trying to find the right material for our application. It can be a little bit tedious, but we've, we've got some ideas on some materials. We haven't tried any out yet, but we're talking about maybe a couple thousand dollars for the material to potentially sell the bridge and, you know, get you an extra five years just out of the deck. Now, you have to do that before they get.
Degraded.
Yeah, it's, it's a maintenance thing for that. But we have some material we'd like to try.
I have a question for you, Derek. When you're talking about redoing the bridges, kind of like the one that's on fifty-five-twenty, it used to have like rails and everything on the side, but now it does not, it's just like the big pipe?
Oh, yes, yeah. We, we replaced that.
You replaced the whole thing?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're talking about, you're talking about?
No.
Something different?
Doing something actually larger than that.
Okay.
You know, that was a, a cost we've been doing in-house from year to year, trying to replace those, those small timber bridges with the pipes that we can. Looking at projects, bridges much larger that we can't replace with pipes, because those we can replace with pipes is a, I'd say fairly cheap remedy for those compared to what this bridge grant would probably be better for. I mean, I'm looking at probably projects that would be six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars or better. Those replacements are about fifty thousand or less on those small bridges that we're going to replace. We've only got three more, I believe, that we can replace with pipes. And after that, the drainage area is too large for replacing in that manner, and then have to require an actual bridge, you know, much larger, six hundred thousand dollars or so.
How long are the bridges, but it never?
A lot of, with, most of our wooden bridges, we've done, we've got rid of the very bad ones, I believe, so we've got a couple, you know, that still need to go. But one of them was, a couple that need to go are actually too large for the pipes. And they're really high up on the list of, that I've got, like one, one for example, burnout bridge. There's a bridge there that is, is not possible to be, any more maintenance or any more work to be done for that bridge to bring it up on this deterioration scale. And it's one that is real high on our list of desire to replace. We actually even acquired a roadway on that about ten years ago to replace that bridge in the Garvey Fund Project, and then we ran out of money before we could get to that one. So it's one that's really high on our list. We've just kind of been maintaining it and had to reduce the weight on the downed bridge on somebody. So we've, we've been maintaining it well enough to, to keep our rating up for that, but it'll never be more than that.
Anything else for the engineer?
I got two things. I know we briefly spoke on one, and I want to talk about it while you're in my, we've talked with Alan earlier in the year. We brought it in a meeting in, Russell Albert went out to the side upon, in Shelton, County eleven forty-five, eleven forty-six, and I brought up that I had a lot of people calling because of the contractor doing the side track extension for CSX had severely degraded that paved road behind the old Shelton School. And I asked in that meeting, prior to that meeting, Russell Albert had gone at it and talked to them and came in the meeting and said that they told him when they got through in the vault, they had budgeted into that project resurfacing the road because they knew they had destroyed it in, like a better term. And I made a comment in that meeting that I wanted him to go on and get with Alan and get the right names on the list, that we didn't let this go six or eight months and then somebody say, well, I didn't make that statement. Well, I, they promised us at that time they would keep the maintenance on that road up so there's maybe eight homes back there, Sedanian Road, now paved road. Got the call Friday that for several weeks now, they've not kept it up. Asked Derek to go out in his capacity and speak with them, and the supervisor of the job told him he would keep it up until September, but that was all he was going to do. And Derek has gone back out today and they've still not kept it up. So we're going to send the road department out tomorrow so these people can get in and out of their house. out of their house. But I, you know, brought that up to Oliver and that didn't go as far as I wanted it earlier this year. If you've got, you know, when we had the, several years ago, when they did all the research on the crossings and we kind of had a dispute along with several of the counties about the giving process and the cost of the bills up there, did you have to, you or Mackenzie want to have some contact with somebody at CSX about those bills?
Alan ultimately wrote, um, an email and we've never been able to deal with it, so I think they took it.
We both, we both did, the...
Yeah, we did work with them.
I would go, I would like to go on now and have y'all get with Derek and let's send them something because any other private company, and I realize the railroad is different to deal with, but there is not another private business in White County or that could come to White County and do work that we would allow to destroy a public road and then leave with no penalty and not making them fix it. Now, set in meetings where we had to deal with contractors doing other types of work and expected them to either pay for it or put it on their insurance, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, that, that... Something four months ago, five months ago, this first came up, you know, in early late winter, first spring, but, uh, that comment was made just, you know, that, uh, which they're not even maintaining with the bomb. We're going to send the road to Barker tomorrow and get where these folks can go and come. But I, you know, I have no idea where we can take this, but I'd like something more official because that, that individual to Oliver several months ago was very definitive. When we get through this project, we're going to pay this road, the cost was figured into that plan. I was out there that day, I don't know who, standing in front of all the homeowners, but when Oliver came back up, that's what we told him, hey, this gentleman just says fixing this road back, what he was, when they came here, was in this plan, they probably hauled eight hundred to a thousand loads of stone down that little road to this railroad project. That's something I probably won't, you know, and I asked him, if, if they leave and don't do something and we are stuck having to mitigate this, when we could be talking, it's a small road, short, but we could still be talking eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for us to get back in the shape it was in before. That's one thing, I don't want that to...
We're a little, we're a little bit more.
Actually, I don't know, you have a Florida tag, I don't know who the contractor is.
Well, I, I, I do know this and I'm not trying to get you in a bind, but Murphy Bridge out of Troy is building the railroad bridge way on down the track. And if we can't get a great answer out of that person, I would think that Frank should be able to tell us who the contact for CSX is over this project. But I mean, you know, we're not even going as far, I mean, they're probably being, you know, of that thousand loads of rock that had come in there. God, eleven twenty-eight is not in the shape it was in Christmas. And I mean, I go down that road very regularly, my, my, my parents live on it. I've had to send Derek out and mitigate places on that road that had peeled off to the sides because I thought they're coming down from two thirty-one. I mean, I'm not even trying to get into that issue with them. That's one where you've got to argue with the fire, it's a mile up the road, but when you're going in a dead-end fade road and it's been completely destroyed in the past six months, it's kind of inarguable, the cause of, of the problem. The other thing, I know we've talked about it, I meant to have it on the agenda tonight. I want to get this as new business where we can have this current at the next meeting. I've been asked by the Deacons at Rocky Elbe Church in Shady Grove, if we could extend the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit in downtown Shady Grove about, uh, to the Montgomery County side of Rocky Elbe Church, maybe eight to a mile or past the church, four miles or past the church. Um, right now, you're coming from the Montgomery County into Shady Grove, you've got to pass the church before it's homestead to thirty-five, closer to Bubba Diddy's stall and let's, you know, had some, a lot of complaints about speed right there, and they just asked, I extend that thirty-five mile zone onto the Montgomery County side of their church where the church would be fully enclosed in the thirty-five mile zone there in Shady Grove. And, um, I know that's something, I believe, talking to Derek, we would have to vote on if you can move in that sign, maybe two hundred yards, turn around, where the vessel will run about a quarter mile.
Well, I'm asking because I'm looking, well, we had to vote on that, why can't he just go move that sign?
I think it was just, uh, we had done several years ago, had done a, uh, procedure, um, for operations for changing speed limits.
Okay.
And that's a sort of, sort of procedural.
I didn't remember how we, I know it's...
In relation to any changes that's...
Yeah, I'll have to confirm.
Well, I'd like to get the groundwork up, that next meeting, that's something we could handle, let him on. Move that sign by a quarter mile or towards Montgomery County where it's at. And looking, all honesty, I don't know, that may be overkill. If, when you get out there, it just needs to be enough advance warning prior to getting to church to try to, the people that are going to pay attention to a sign to slow that, you know, if you get out there in four miles overkill, you know...
I mean, your pitch is... Probably need to go a quarter to half a mile past the church to do the slowing down time.
Okay, good. And that's another interest that these, uh, the speed detector traffic control signs, we're talking about, they'd be, we'd come in handy, recycling ball, dead guy.
We got to move on. Do you have anything else?
That's all.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Alan, do you have anything?
No, Paul.
Does any commissioner have anything to report today? Okay, uh, Admette Bay before, along with E M A before?
Wait, um, let me pull up with this conversation, because I don't tell you that long. Um, he had gathered the information for the source, uh, storm damage cost, and he said it does a lot that, uh, we will meet the threshold on damage to be able to do an application for, uh, federal help on it. Um, and he said that most of the damage is from primarily electrical and...
Brains or people.
So he's planning on submitting that application tomorrow. So, I guess he's...
Other than...
Somebody else?
Do you remember, and everybody's going to hear you, Ken, ask that? We don't want, how long would it take to get some sort of feedbacks when we get started?
I don't think that is, yeah, I don't think that's take a long time. I consider a message in between would be interesting. I don't think, I think if they've just cleared it in our area...
We did, when the blast storm came through and really tore up from Lindwood and Brundage, didn't we? It was out of the regulation.
And I think it's pretty quick because of, like he said, trying to get the reason and all that. As long as it's been cleared by the lover in our area, I don't think it takes very long, but I'll, I'll send them a message in between if it gets to love's time. Um, under my report, I have two items under new business and I will ask that we suspend them all and vote on these. The first one is for F M L A for an employee at jail, and they've already had to go on late. So we're just asking for that to be approved, willing. Uh, the, uh, email letter request is in the packages. Uh, the second item is the list of the office errors and taxes and litigation from the revenue commissioner, and this is just something we need to get approved so that it gets sent off to the state. That's a normal thing we do every, every year. Uh, there's no questions on that. In our current business, I have, uh, commission office personnel, there is a letter from E. We'd like to recommend the hiring of Miss, uh, Deanna Renee Williams. Um, we had five people come in and they were all very good applicants, but she did really well. She had a really good, uh, reference. When I called, I think she'd be a nice asset to the office. Um, so I do have that for her. Um, the other two items that I have to be the H V A C service bid and the land payment bill bid for the judicial complex. I put copies of those bids in front of you all. I think they're ready to go out, so that we can start moving on those items. But that's all I have to...
You might have got any more questions for Admette Bay? Okay, thank you. Uh, the workstation is now closed. We'll reconvene at six P M. regularly.